Welcome everybody to the planning board meeting of July the fifteenth. Motion to open the meeting at seven P M with a roll call vote. Do I have a second?
Second.
So they moved and seconded. Steph Harrison. Brett Piercy.
Hi.
Jim Guarino.
Hi.
Rob Wolf.
Hi.
And I Frank Hook, Emma and I as well. So the first item on the agenda is for us at seven soon after to go into executive session. The board will return to open session following the executive session at about seven thirty. Next item at seven thirty will be the minutes. It will be, there's no hearing tonight. We will be discussing updates to rules, regulations and application forms for MS four stormwater rules and regs. For A and R application forms, rules and regulation updates. We're discussing site plan review and special permit applications, form rules and regulation updates. Special permit A D U types, bylaw updates, public hearing dates and items. And then for other business reports on meetings with other board and entities and town kind of report.
Motion to accept the agenda.
Right, I was just seeing if there was anything else. There is one other thing. Are there any topics not anticipated forty eight hours in advance that may need to be added? Hearing none, I didn't maybe taken out of order. So do I have a motion to accept the agenda by roll call vote? Do I have a second?
Okay.
Steph seconds, Brett.
Hi.
Rob.
Hi.
Jim.
Hi.
Stephanie.
Hi.
And I Frank Hook, Emma and I as well. So now I'm going to make a motion to go into executive session. Executive session, do I read the whole thing?
Yep.
Pursuant to G L C three thirty A S twenty one A seven to comply with or act under the authority of the Public Records Law G O C four S seven parentheses twenty six to discuss privileged written communications from council and G L C thirty A S twenty one A three to discuss strategies with respect to litigation. If the chair so declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the planning board and town and the chair does so declare. Hudson Walker versus Sherburne Planning Board Land Corps twenty three M I C oh 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 three nine eight. The board will return to open session following the executive session. I need a second and roll call vote.
Second.
Okay, so Stephanie second. So the motion is seconded by Stephanie having a second. You now need to have a roll call vote. Stephanie Harrison.
Hi.
I Frank Hook, Emma and I as well. Rob Wolf.
Hi.
Jim Guarino.
Hi.
Brett Piercy.
Hi.
A motion to, okay, so we will now go into executive session. Okay, so is there anybody to let in?
I'm going to admit, we have some guests, yep.
Eddie May.
Have we, everybody?
Yep.
Okay, thank you to those that have been waiting. We have already opened the meeting at seven P M. The agenda had been read. We've entered executive session, return now to open session. So we'll begin with the first item on the agenda, which is the minutes of June the tenth. Do, are there any edits to the June the tenth minutes?
I had some clarification items.
Okay, go ahead Steph.
My employment with Stan Tech is present day, so I just wanted to make that abundantly clear here. Can you guys see? Sorry, trying to make it bigger. So I'd like to clarify that that's a present employment.
Okay.
Um, just some clarification language on structures and stone walls. Oh, you know what? This is, this is a, let me just, uh, I think I need to separate this a little bit differently. So where is the structures and stone walls? So structures are included on the A and R plan as boundaries, though not highly, though not highly visible was a little strange to me, but I think without detail was what was intended. And stone walls are typically included where they are in the right of way or property boundaries. So I just wanted to make that clarification. And then there was one other location about the best and the the states intense to issue permitting guidelines for small bests. It was just worded a little bit unclearly to me, so. And I think Frank, you were in my notes, you were the one who had offered to sort of keep an eye on all this stuff, so.
Yes, and I'm not sure that it was for small bests, but large scale bests.
It's small, so the large scale they were going to issue.
Oh exemptions.
State permitting, but for for small bests that would be local, but they would provide all of the regulations and requirements for the local localities to use. So this was for small bests. Uh, so that's it on my end.
On the very last page, very last paragraph before to the adjourn, where it's Frank Hook, right after it says member of the community center. So I'd like to add, you noted that is also a member of the Energy and Sustainability Committee and Sherburne, and then the rest stays the same. It's just Sherburne Community Center. It's the title of the community center.
Oh, I was almost thinking of striking that whole section, but what did you want me to add here?
Energy. And Sustainability Committee. And Sherburne.
Sure, okay. Any other edits from folks?
Can you scroll up a little bit, Steph? That that's a little bit awkward noting that commercial assignments are very popular at this time. I would just strike that.
I mean, these, we could strike the whole member introductions. That was really just for the benefit of the new people who were on the call, but I guess that's, it seems a little odd to be wordsmithing our personal backgrounds here, but I can, I can strike this, that's fine.
You just leave it as member introductions. Okay.
Sure. Just delete all this?
Everybody good with that?
Yes.
Okay.
It's not important for the record, I don't think.
Right, good, okay. So I move to approve the minutes as amended for June tenth twenty twenty five. I have a second. Second by Jim Guarino, Steph Harrison.
Hi.
Rob Wolf.
Hi.
Brett Piercy.
Hi.
Jim Guarino.
Hi.
I Frank Hook, Emma and I as well. Okay, we have nothing.
I'm just gonna let you know, I will be attaching Brian Moore's email as an attachment to the minutes. Because that was read.
Right. I don't need to add that to the motion, though.
It's in the minutes.
I think we said in the minutes refer to the attachment. It was too long to put everything in.
Yeah.
So our current current planning board business, updates on rules, regulations, applications, MS four stormwater rules and regulations. We start with that one? Heidi, you want to give us an overview on that?
Sure, so there was a D E P had contacted the town letting us know that we were not in compliance with our stormwater, right? Rulings for them that apparently the town had and put in a bylaw, but we never put in regulations. And it was interesting, I actually found a letter that said two thousand and seven was referring to the bylaw they were creating and that regulations would follow. They just have never followed. They're not in there. Didn't seem to be a problem all these years, but there was it was a new person that was involved on the D E P side reviewing applications and realized that we did not have any regulations. So we are now termed out of compliance, which affects us for potential funding for grants or things we may want to pursue, so we need to get back in compliance as quickly as possible. And they sent us templates that Lexington have to be a template that they said was a good example, and they recommended that we just cut and paste this template. Because we can vote our regulations at a public hearing without doing a town meeting. This would end up being a fairly easy fix, and we have by September thirtieth to show complete compliance back to D E P. So Addie May helped get the Lexington template together. Joyce and I have made some effort efforts on trying to put some of the wording that would fit for Sherburne. If Chris Cane has reviewed this, he may have some more edits. Jeremy said he wanted to take a look at this as well. The goal is that I sent this out to get your feedback on what you see here for the stormwater management regulations. And this is all for disturbances over one acre. It's not for small. So there's, I know we have stormwater on our topic to address possibly further bylaw changes and regulations, but it's will be in two steps. Step one is focused strictly on getting us in D E P compliance. Step two will be looking at what might benefit the town for stormwater management in general. So this step, and I think Steph, if you can share, it looks like it would be good to create a part five on our planning board regulations. We have part one is special permit. Part two is subdivision rules and regs. Part three was scenic roads. Part four is farm entertainment, and then I'm suggesting a part five stormwater management. So that's where these would sit in our section three eighty. I had sent out a draft with highlighting in yellow some of the changes we were making from the Lexington version. Biggest difference was what hook would have permitting authority. Some cases places its planning board, some places it's Concom. Joyce is on the call as our conservation agent. I know she did have someone from Concom who also had some input on these. And the goal is that we get a vote on some document tonight. Whether it's this, whether we can add some changes to this now that we publicize, this document will be available to be looked at, and it'll be hearing at our August nineteenth meeting. Where we can still make further changes during that meeting, but to have a document published that people can read to work with.
So are there any comments from the planning board? Let's start with planning board members first.
Yeah, I always have comments, Frank, but I'm happy to let other people speak first.
So can I, I'd like to ask about the scope of responsibility. I may be totally wrong here, but my guess is, is that the Conservation Commission has statutory authority over, you know, wetlands and boarding vegetation zones and all that. But we need regulations that cover stormwater and, you know, stormwater over the development or something. Regardless as to whether it's not a wetlands issue, it's just, we have to look at stormwater, even if there's no wetlands within a mile of the place. And so these are the regulations that are missing now that we have to put in?
Yeah, I think so, and I think that's why Heidi was working together with Concom as well. And if you look at this document, there, there is that distinction where there is a Concom when they're looking at areas that have the wetlands and so on versus just developments and spillage over the acre and so on.
But there's to be more regulation in the future, Rob, beyond this. This is just in response to the state's directive that we have rules and regulations in place to make our bylaw stand up, right? So this is like a stopgap measure to address our current stormwater bylaw. But there is a plan to potentially modify the current stormwater bylaw through future town meeting. So that would also have to come with potential modifications to the rules and regs as appropriate.
Yeah, it says no building permit shall be issued without confirmation that stormwater management permit has been obtained or determined to not be required. If you're just building a house on a single, you know, single family house on a ordinary lot. Is there any permitting required for stormwater?
It's just like one acre of disturbance, right? So the way the, the way the current bylaw reads with respect to the trigger is.
So we're on page seven, okay.
Under applicability. It says, so the applicability of the of the rules and regs point back to the two, the bylaw section two hundred, right? Is that, is there something different in here, Heidi?
Uh, no, just.
Applicability.
What, right on that six point oh, no building permit, and then we talked about.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
But it does talk about, it is one acre of land disturbance unless there was something in the Concom wetland area that might also trigger a stormwater review that would be noted in the building permit software that in a condition.
But it says these rules and regs apply to projects, meaning the applicability of chapter two hundred. Is that, that's the?
That's the one you were showing before, yep.
So that, so that applicability criteria. And I was a little confused by this because I thought the applicability of two hundred was around discharges to the MS four system. But I.
It is. So when you go to the first part about, keep going to the very first sentence, purpose. And then that goes on to talk about all the towns, land, lakes, everything else. However, I'm concerned that this limit, the first few words say that it's to regulate MS four. Not anything, not the rest of the stuff after that. It's one interpretation. I think this is something that is up for interpretation.
So this would be addressed through the next stormwater bylaw.
Right.
Update.
Right.
But down in applicability for section two hundred, they talk about land disturbance. If the activity will disturb or alter one acre or more of land. So to answer your question, Rob, if you're building a single family home and the footprint of your disturbance is less than an acre, then it's not applicable. But if you're tearing up an acre or more, then then you have to do a stormwater management plan.
Uh huh, okay.
Um. So then here's, you know, the main, the main meat of what Heidi was saying and is that the permitting granting authority is defined as the planning board in some cases and the Concom in other cases. So I guess, I guess Heidi, my question is, it's. I don't know if it's both, because if none, if none are required, then it defaults to the Concom.
Yep.
I don't think there's a situation where both of us would have to approve a stormwater management plan. Um. But if the applicability for the rules and regs is only chapter two hundred, does that get to all of the triggers that the Concom needs?
Joyce, are you able to answer that question?
So not necessarily, but again, I, I think the next generation of amendments may help.
I don't think this is going to hurt us right now with D E P compliance. I guess, you know, right, so.
That's the goal of this, is to get do that, and the one acre is helpful and the regulations are helpful. Concom hasn't permitted any activity that has a total disturbance over an acre in the last, you know, two couple of years. I went back and calculated some of the bigger brand, you know, new houses. They've all kept it just under an acre. So there's one, there's one house in town that that would might have triggered that, but it didn't, you know, didn't come up as a permit.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, Rob, did that answer the question that you had started with here?
Yes, I think so. It still it still does seem like there is a little bit of overlapping because like if I look at permit granting authority, if I look at one and two, it sort of says, let's say if it's a subdivision, it's the planning board, except the subdivision may also have a Concom notice of intent associated with it, so.
So in that case, you, they would do their stormwater permitting through the planning board because it's a subdivision and you're likely overseeing some kind of a stormwater management plan, and it would be conservation for a notice of intent.
Uh huh.
So they would submit the same stormwater management application?
Not application, but the documents that they submit. So there should only be one. The part, the planning board should be the one, if it's a subdivision or a site plan approval. It, it would be the planning board, but they may also need a permit for activity in the wetland buffer zone.
But not the stormwater management plan approval from the Concom.
Correct.
So maybe we add some language here that says where it is not a site plan approval, subdivision approval, or special permit approval, then it's the Concom?
We, I thought, we tried to do that in number two. Like, like that, the number one says, uh, planning board for site plan approval, subdivision, special permit.
Yeah. But if they have to file a subdivision approval and an N O I, they wouldn't submit twice, right?
No, well, they would submit, we, the planning board and the Conservation Commission have different applications for different purposes. So ours would be for to protect the wetland buffer zone, and you're going to develop a stormwater plan that's really handling, you know, erosion control, and our interests might overlap. But I, I don't know that we want to take away, you know, what if there is no Concom involvement, you not necessarily want to remove it, or if it's a subdivision that involves wetlands, generally the planning board would reach out for a peer review to go over that and address a lot of the issues that would come up with the stormwater permit.
I guess I just want to avoid a situation because the the planning board and the Concom aren't always fully in communication about every property or every application that comes out. Is there a situation in which documents would be submitted separately, like if you have a, an application filed in conjunction with an N O I, and also that same application is filed in conjunction with the subdivision application?
So it will be the same plans and maybe the same supporting documents that would get submitted to Conservation and planning board, but it's a notice, it would be the notice of intent application that it's, which is a D E P form and a reference to the wetland bylaw, not, not the, you know, there's no, there are no planning board applications that overlap, and that would happen whether you had stormwater regulations or not.
Okay, I'm, I guess I just want to make sure that I understand, so. Under what circumstance would the Concom be a permit granting authority?
Uh, let's say I had a, you had a, a single family dwelling that meets the threshold for over an acre, then that would be the the Conservation Commission, you know, any activity that's not a subdivision or site plan review or a special permit would, would go to conservation. And that would predominantly be large, single family dwellings.
So because this says one, one acre or more of land requires obtaining a stormwater management permit from the planning board, the way the bylaw is written. I think. So I just, I want to be.
Yeah, I, I, I've read so many things here that I can't remember if it also says that the planning board can assign someone.
Said that somewhere, and I'm trying to remember where.
I'm trying to remember where to.
That's fine if that's the case. I just, I'm confused about when, when it would be the planning board versus when it would be the Concom, because as I read this, and I still am not a hundred percent clear even reading it right now, it looks like one acre or more of disturbance requires the permit from the planning board.
It's almost like there'd be two permits, so if, because if it is in the wetlands, I think it's going to still trigger Concom doing something regardless of whether. Well, this bylaws, it's got to be reworked.
I think we have to find out, I, I thought there was something in the by, in the bylaw that referenced.
That's what I'm trying to look at.
But, but I've again looked at so many that I can't remember.
I, yeah.
So Steph, if you look up, and then I'm not sure where we'll be here, under the Concom condition of where they would need to have a the permit factor in the, in the wetland area, and what does that wording say? And maybe it clarifies it there.
I'm just like, this defines planning board as the authority when the application comes in as part of a site plan approval. And then, and then it delineates Concom when the application comes in under a different circumstance, but one project could trigger both planning board and Concom, is that correct?
Now I see what you're saying, yes.
Yeah, so, so who's, so it seems like there should be like a default PGA and then a PGA for other circumstances that aren't covered above, right?
I see what you're saying now, yes.
But I don't, yeah, so I think that potentially. I also have like a lot of, I don't want to like uh, take, have this take like so long, but I, like, I had question about the permit granting authority and the logistics of how it works when, when the PGA is hiring like an engineer as a third party to review things. Like, does the, does the planning board have that authority to do that? Like, if we collect non criminal fines, you know, that are cited at the bottom in dollar amounts, do we have the, like, it says the PGA will assess these fines, but does the planning board have the authority to do that? I, I just, I just have a lot of administrative questions I just don't know the answer to, not having done rules and regs before. I think we're gonna have to ask town council on the one that if the bylaws, and we, we can't touch the bylaw, we're stuck with that. Right now, but the bylaw states it's the planning board. Can the regs do anything different? Well, and if, I guess, I guess my, my question is, is there a unique situation that's not the one acre trigger? Right, where the, where it would make sense for the Concom. To have authority over the stormwater management. Application. But our bylaw doesn't say that. But I think our bylaw too is explicit only to the M S four area. Arguably. Because when you look at app- applicability, it doesn't say, like, under applicability, it doesn't say within the M S four system. These circumstances are applicable, right? Right. And maybe I can ask a question. Have you, can I ask the memories of those in the room, of those who were on the boards, since we have Addie May here as well? Who may have been on the board years ago when there was potentially another case like this, is that, or should I do that between now and the hearing? I don't wanna real, sideline this conversation too much. I'll, I'll, I won't bring it up now. Oh, Addie May, I'm gonna, I'm gonna tap you later.
So if we go back to the rules and regs.
Yeah. Yep.
We, we, certainly the, the, the Conservation Commission kicks in when there's wetlands. Right, Joyce? So would we say in this number two, in the situation where? Any of this, uh, in- involves any impact on wetlands, that that's when the Conservation Commission would be the.
Or maybe we say something like the planning board may delegate its, its PGA status to the Concom. Where wetlands. Are a critical component of. The stormwater management plan or something like that.
Or if disturbances occurring within the buffer zone. Are near the buffer zone.
Can I try it? Can I just start writing and see what happens? Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to find that, so under the enforcement, I'm trying to find that area where we talked about, it's an author, the permit. Author, granting authority or an authorized agent of the permit granting authority may issue written notice of violations or enforcement orders. So we do have something in these regulations that planning, you know, there can be a delegation. I'm just putting something on paper to react to. It's a stormwater, is it a stormwater management application or a stormwater management plan? This says permit, uh, permit, oh no, we, we issue the.
We submit a plan and they get a permit.
But the plan is part of an application, I think.
Right.
Okay. I'm confused by the word application here, but I, I'll.
There should be an application form associated with it.
Yeah.
That we don't have as part of this yet.
Yeah. The definition has stormwater management plan, a plan required is part of the application for a stormwater management permit. I think this would be the plan, because it's. It's where, where, where wetlands are involved in the stormwater management that we want Concom to weigh in.
Eddie May has a good point in the chat too.
Oh.
Eddie May, if you just wanna go ahead and state that.
I can't see the chat.
Just, if Addie May just states what she.
Uh, can you hear me? I'm on a headset, so.
Yes.
Okay, so what I recall, just kinda going through, is really planning board does not get involved with. Our authority over stormwater management plans would be during a site plan review when it's a subdivision bylaw. I mean, a sub- subdivision site plan review, otherwise the one acre disturbance triggers the, um. Conservation Commission, so then that's when conservation gets involved, and other, outside of that. Planning board does not. Really deal with stormwater other than, you know, just reviewing if it's necessary in, in subdivisions. Essentially, it's really the only time it really comes up for us. So a single family home is planning where doesn't review single family home. I mean, building inspector and would review single family home projects. And then Conservation Commission would get involved when there's more than one acre disturbance, but.
So the way I read the, the, the bylaw, if I can just skip out some sections of it, I think it says. No person shall undertake construction activities that requires a planning board review, a building permit. Or utility line work. Or if the activity will disturb or alter one acre or more of land. Without obtaining a stormwater management permit from the planning board. There's so many commas in the sentence, it's hard to sort of parse it out, but I think it's saying you cannot do construction.
Yeah, which is an odd thing because I can't even visualize, or I've never seen an actual, it's just a stormwater. Management permit that's been, that the planning board has issued, I, I don't think that we've got anything drafted. I mean, it's. Again, you could say it's been permitted as part of a subdivision site plan review, and that it's been on the legend, and it's been checked off on that there is. Adequate stormwater management, but I've never. I don't recall any just single stormwater management permit that got filed. From the planning board.
This part was amended in, uh, twenty twenty-three, so it'll be pretty recent. And, uh, in that period of time, I don't remember any either.
Most of the twenty-three amendments were administrative grammar, grammar changes, there's nothing substantial. Cause I looked that up. For Steph. Yeah, and most of that is just like grammatical, it's like commas and semicolons and code references and stuff.
So what is this by, uh, A R T twenty point twenty-two?
Article twenty-two of the town meeting, so article twenty-two was a housekeeping item, and it really is focused on.
Got it.
Cross referencing and terminology.
It could be, we have another grammar issue here.
Well, it seems like if you wanna keep the regulations compatible with. The bylaw, that unless you're gonna change the bylaw, you basically. Are, have to say that the planning board is the permit granting authority, period.
What if we say the planning board shall serve as the permit granting authority? And then the planning board may designate to the Conservation Commission as, as the authorizing agent. Under certain circumstances, I know I didn't write it well here, but just, you know, sort of like to define what those circumstances are.
Then would we need the rest of that paragraph below it?
No, I, if this, we do this, then we would just.
Get rid of that in number three.
Yeah, rid of all of this, and number two, and this.
Right.
And this, yeah.
Right.
Right, so just say the planning board shall serve as PGA. May designate Concom. Can we say as the PGA, because there's so many places where the term PGA is used, like, can we?
I think so.
Oops. As long as a regulation allows us to designate someone else. I thought you just read me a thing that it did. I thought you just, I, that's what I was typing this. I have it, the regu- the regulation has it that we can designate, I can't find it in the bylaw. Oh. But we can. Okay. We can, they said for enforceability was something that. I think we make these changes, we run it by town council to make sure have them check it. Okay, so what is, what is the right, what comes after this, when or where? Uh, Joyce, I need your input on this. Like, when, when does the Concom get triggered to be. Involved?
Generally, at the beginning of the project.
Nope, but I mean, like, it's, is it, is it a wetland affiliation with wetlands?
It's affiliation with wetlands or any wetland resource area.
Okay, so when. Or, or where, where the area of disturbance. Is near wetland resource areas or what?
Or was it within the buffer zone? Of a wetland resource area.
That's what I meant to say, but very well said.
Okay.
The other way we could say it, just if we wanted to be safe, instead of designate, we could say, uh, work with or cooperate with. Conservation Commission.
But then the planning board remains the, the, the authority?
Right, but they would, they would give us their professional, um. Aspect and, and, and thoughts and opinions as to what should be done with that. If we cannot designate, then that would be the other way of doing it.
Right. So, so part of the reason we were switching back and forth between the planning board or the Conservation Commission. Which we might not be able to do at this moment, was that it, if, if it's just a. Conservation thing, they don't have to go to both the planning board and conservation. The, so, uh, so, so, you know, they're not filing with us and then filing with the planning board to get the stormwater permit. It was sort of one stop shopping. That way, that was the goal.
Yeah, I, I would much prefer to not have to have the planning board here every time if it's triggered by a Con- Concom. I like the one stop shop.
Is everybody good with this? And then, uh, having town council review to make sure that that's okay? Uh, any names? Nobody good, that, that you're not good with it? Okay.
Okay.
In the other sections, anybody else have any other inputs or thoughts on this?
Yeah, and some questions. So. Oh, I think this is a terminology, this is the property lines of the project, but I think in the definitions. So this is the a butter list, right? There is no definition of project in the definitions section, but there is a definition of site, which is the. I, it's like the parcel or property on which the, any lot, parcel of land or area of property where land disturbing. Activities are, were, or will be performed.
It, that should be site then, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so I was, let's see. So property lines of the site, so that way, even if they say we're only disturbing this area of the site, it says the property lines of the site, so.
Right.
Okay. Um, let me just make that change then. And property lines is highlighted presumably because that's a point of discussion to make sure that's what we want. It was a change from the Lexington plan because, yes.
They had project, and if, if, if this was a large parcel, no butters would get notified.
Right, okay. Okay, so then it says the permitting, permit granting authority, oh, there's a period missing here. Okay, so the permit granting authority may, at the applicant's expense, retain a licensed P E or other professional consultant to advise. On all, any or all aspects of these plans, but that, but that also is invoked for reviewing the plans. The pre-meeting, performing inspections, reviewing the final report, they all call back to engine, this third party engineer. So it's like a big role for a third party engineer. And I was wondering, like, it just seems like a lot for like a homeowner. Who's. Disturbing an acre of land to then pay for. The town to hire a consulting firm to do all of these things. Maybe it's fine, I just don't really have context for how significant this is.
You froze. In some instances. The, the design of the infiltration system or the stormwater infiltration system might be beyond our ability to. To, to, to weigh in on, so. It, it might be necessary to send it out to somebody who could give it a once over. They do that in the town of Midway, and I, I'm not necessarily saying they're the best example, but. Uh, I asked how much that typically costs the applicant. And it ranged somewhere between eighteen hundred and twenty-five hundred dollars, depending on the size of the project. They have a, a, a lower threshold, so a lot more. Projects get tagged.
That's really helpful information, um, is that just for reviewing the application?
Well, it's, it's not the, so there's the application and there's the, the, the plan, the, the plan that goes with it. And the supporting, if there's a stormwater report, you know, if there's just anything that goes along with that.
And there's also the word there that says may, doesn't mean that they have to, just.
Understood, understood, but they all.
It might be, it might be a simple design, so.
But they also talk about, oh wait, I know what I need to do, like, I've, I looked for where this third party engineer comes into play. Right, so, so they, they ask for five thousand dollars upfront, but then if that's insufficient to cover. Then, um, may require the applicant to submit additional, any additional funding, right? So it's a little bit like a blank check, which is a little bit just different for me. And then, then they say the. Nope, that's not it. Let me find it. So I think it's down here, so then when we go to site inspection, supervising and final reports. There's the pre-con meeting with the applicants, of the applicant's engineer. And the town's third party engineer, right, so now the engineer's coming back into the picture, and then. Oh, this, the inspections are the applicant's, okay, I was getting a little confused, so that's, oh no, this also is. Also, the town's third party engineer is coming to the site inspections, right?
Those are, those are probably unnecessary.
Okay. Cause this is an inspection will also be completed by the town's third party engineer in multiple places here. Which just makes me feel like we're just like asking for a blank check, and this is adding up to a lot of things that the applicant is signing up for. There might be circumstances where this makes sense, like a very large development.
Right.
I just didn't know how to, like, how to not make this look like. A money grab to an applicant, it felt a little much for like a small, single family home project, not small, but.
Well, but it's. I, I agree with it.
It, it says assessed on a case by case basis.
Yes, it does.
And how do you fur- I mean, could you further define that somehow?
Yeah, that was like way up at the top, I think. And it was where they said the five thousand, right? Yeah, as, it's this, this one, yeah, you're right. And we don't have to solve this today, I just sort of, it caught my attention as looking like, um. A potential for a lot of things. I, I can move on, just something to think about. Okay, so. I often get a question about stormwater management, about whether there's an opportunity for the town. To impose more stringent stormwater management practices that account for climate change. Um, rather than taking the N R C C's. Uh, precipitation data, which is based on historic record, um, and not. Climate change, there's no, there's no one stop shop like N R C C for climate change storms. But I just wanted to just, it came to mind, I put it on the paper. but I just wanted to just, it came to mind, I put it on the paper, there's, I, I get this question occasionally, about whether there's opportunities here to protect ourselves from climate change. Uh, my next question was about standards, there's a lot of standards in here about like removal of different pollutants and treating new developments and redevelopments differently with different removal percentages and things like that, and I just don't, I was curious if they're, if they all come from if, if they're sort of industry standard. And maybe Joyce, I guess the question would be for you, do you see these same kinds of standards across different towns, or does every town kind of take its own?
Well, the new development, yeah, the new development is, uh, that makes sense. I mean, for new development, the total, uh, the TSS removal for.
Yeah, so it's ninety percent TSS and sixty percent total phosphorus for new development.
Right, so for, for like a redevelopment or, or, uh, an addition to a house or even a, a single family dwelling, it might only be just infiltr, accommodating the first inch of stormwater off the surface of the roof. So it's, it's, I guess it's really dependent upon, um, like, I, this is a, a large, this, this, these regs cover everything from simple projects or what they would consider a minor permit to major, you know, so we just have to, I guess, distinguish between what's required for the two.
Yeah, I mean, Sherwin does tend to err on the side of caution, especially when it comes to things like water quality, so I'm not opposed to this, but I'm just sort of trying to understand if it's the norm or if we're really going out on a limb here, you know what I mean, I just, it's, it's all a balancing act when you.
So again, what, these are the, the template from Lexington, uh, that, that we used, we didn't, the only things we changed were highlighted in yellow.
Right.
We just basically copied what they had.
But what was Lexington's applicability criterion?
Um, I'm not at, I'm not at my desk, so I don't have the, I have a breakdown sheet, so I can't remember.
That's okay, I'm not trying to put you on the spot all day, so I'm just trying to understand.
No, no, I was, I, I would, if I was sitting in the right spot.
Um, they said it applies to all projects meeting the applic, applicability of their, of the bylaw.
Right.
Normal, normal maintenance and improvement of land in agriculture or agri- aquaculture uses defined is exempt from their requirement. Of these regulations.
We did have an exemption for down here for when the activities are limited to maintenance and improving, improvement of existing road, so we did some exemptions here.
Yeah.
Of, of the storm, of the stormwater requirements, but not necessar, of, of the like TSS and phosphorus removal requirements, but not necessarily exempting out of the rules and regs, which would be the whole stormwater management plan.
No, they do have in there, new development and redevelopment projects must comply with the rules and regs contained herein, unless expressly waived by the permit granting authority.
Okay.
So it can be waived.
Well, in theirs, but not in ours, right?
Well, that's, we're putting it in our regulations, that's, it's in our copy here, it's on, um, five point O.
Oh, I see, unless expressly waived.
Yep.
Okay, um. All right, let me go back to. Okay, so I, I guess I sort of wanted to understand with, with these standards that are proposed, like, how typical are they in Massachusetts, just to get a feel for it, I think that's a relevant data point that I don't have.
All, all we knew is the DEP sent us this, so this is a good template, we said, okay, that was what he sent us.
Sure, okay. Um, it was getting hot. Let's see, there was a statement in here that was a little confusing, and I can send these comments to Joyce and we can if you want to vote on the document tonight, I'm totally fine voting this through and then thinking about this stuff before the public hearing, um, if it makes sense to do this. But this sort of says, you know, if you're only maintaining existing roadways, which means widening less than a lane, then you're exempt. But then it goes on to say roadway widening or improvements by greater than or equal to a lane width are not exempt. And that was a little bit of a confusing distinction to me because you know, if you have a big subdivision, it's just, it's not clear how that would apply, right, if you're widening, say, the main road in your subdivision, but not the minor roads or something, I don't know, I'm making it up, it doesn't seem like a, a very, a, a clear distinction in all cases. Enforcement I found at the bottom, so I will delete that, just haven't seen it by the time I got there. All right, so now we have an operate, an operation and maintenance plan. And stormwater infrastructure, is that defined? Did I miss that, um? It requires inspection and maintenance logs, so I'm wondering if you have to like rake out your sediment base or your retaining basin, does that count?
So, so if you have a, um, if, if you reach the, the, the trigger where you are preparing um, your stormwater design for DEP stormwater guidelines, they have an operation and maintenance plan in there that you're supposed to follow.
Okay, so is operation and maintenance plan?
Report, logs and reports.
Okay, is, but if, if you're a homeowner and your stormwater management plan consists of like, a surface basin, right, to like, no?
No, you shouldn't have to, you know, there's no operation, I mean, it, there could be a simple one, but it, it's, I, I don't know that we want to get that far into it.
No, I don't either, that's why, okay, so as long as it's clear that like, the person who's done an acre of disturbance and has swales and things like that, don't have to submit in, inspection and maintenance logs. If that's clear, that's great.
And again, the planning board can set these, if it's just a single homeowner, we can set circuit conditions.
Okay. This was just a, a formatting thing, I think these go underneath one, I think they're like one A, one B, one C, cause it says which may include but not limited to requirements to do these things, like enforcement, you could require someone to fix something, and then the property owner could appeal, I think this should, I think these are all one A through one E, and then this is number two. Just formatting.
We will have to format, I thought, well, hold up, we have to reformat everything to say three eighty dash five, cause it's not gonna, that'll be part five, we have to do the whole code.
Okay, so I'll just leave the note in here.
Yeah, leave the note, there'll be As and Bs and Cs as opposed to one twos and threes on a lot of these.
Okay. Great.
And I have a clarification to make, it's the EPA, the Environmental Protection Agency that sent us this template, not the DEP, sorry.
Oh, EPA sent it to you from the town of Lexington?
Yeah, they sent us that as an example.
Interesting, okay. Okay, this one just stood out to me, any person who purchases, inherits or otherwise acquired, acquires real estate upon which work has been done in violation of the provision of the stormwater management by law and regulations. So if you, if you buy, if you buy a home and then subsequently learn that you're, that the prior owner was in violation, um, it says any purchase shall comply with any such order and restore real estate to its condition prior such violation as the PGA deems necessary to remedy the violation, it just seemed a little like, like, if, how would you know that, I, I, I don't know, maybe this is like, you know, again, I haven't gone through a rules and regs development process, so a lot of this is just foreign to me, so maybe this is just like normal language that I just haven't seen before. But I didn't see a place where a violation requires some sort of a deed recording that you would know when you purchase a property that it has that violation on it.
Yeah, my guess is like building permits, if they weren't done or closed out, you buy a house, I think you inherit.
It's true.
The whole thing, having to put it to code.
When you buy a bill, a house with, without a permit, are you, or not up to code, are you grandfathered in?
I think it's a question of what you're gonna do, yeah.
Okay. All right, I'm fine with that, um, and I'm sorry, there's so much of this that's on my education, I just haven't been through this process before. Okay, so then this is where we get to like penalties for violations. If the planning board is the permit granting authority, do we have that authority for assessing penalties and collecting fines? Where does the money go, like, how, how realistic is this enforcement?
Well, we, our zoning enforcement officer can levy fines.
Hmm, okay.
It's, it'd be the same process.
Or it's designated, okay, yep. There it says, or it's designated.
Yeah.
Okay, no, that makes sense. What was it here, if it was changed?
They probably said, they probably said planning board, on a lot of these permit granting ones, I had changed
I see.
To permit granting authority to give us more flexibility in case it was going to be Concom or planning board.
Okay. Yeah, that makes sense, okay. Okay, so I think we made some changes and I left a couple of notes in here, maybe just for consideration, um, and I can copy Joyce when I send you this, Heidi and Frank.
Okay.
And I think we changed the language that was most, potentially most problematic. Were there any other planning board comments on this?
Are there any comments from anybody that is not on the planning board, would like to comment on this? Okay, seeing none. So we make a motion to approve the stormwater rules and regs, um, section with amendments, and to schedule a public hearing for August the nineteenth, uh, twenty twenty-five.
Don't we have to put a time on a motion for a public hearing?
Uh, uh, yes. Want to say seven fifteen?
Okay. So let me reread the motion, I make a motion to approve the stormwater rules and regulations section, including the amendments made this evening, and to schedule a public hearing on August the nineteenth, twenty twenty-five at seven fifteen PM. Hey, all those in favor, Jim Marino?
Hi.
Brett Piercy?
Hi.
Rob Wolf?
Hi.
Stephanie Harrison?
Hi.
And I, Franco, I as well, okay. Good. The next item, A and R application form, rules and regulations updates.
More fun stuff.
Heidi, you want to take us through that?
Sure, I'm gonna start it and then I'm gonna turn over the rules and regs up to, to Jim, cause he worked on this too with us. So this came up, came because there were some discrepancies on A and R procedures or what was being done and what, what we were requiring and we thought we should look in and change our regulations while we can and align it and make it so it's very clear to what people have to turn into us. And going, I highlighted in yellow, changes on the existing form. One of the first ones was, Steph, do you want to bring up the form on that? We were requiring five copies on our A and R application, but our rules and regulation says four. We, I don't need five copies, so I, I want to make the change to align four to match our regs. Um, and then a plan at a scale, I don't know if we need to say one inch to forty, or, cause one recent was fifty, is there, do you want to just say a plan at a scale appropriate for the size of the property, or do you how do you want to word that? Does anyone have a preference on?
I don't think we should prescribe the scale because, um, it can force a property to two or four drawings unintentionally.
So then a scale appropriate for the size of the property, does that just take out that measurement and the word or?
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Well, I've already, I've already made the modifications.
Oh, sorry, I, I didn't have that on your, I didn't send Steph the whole latest update.
Do you want to share instead, Jim, or?
Yeah, maybe, maybe that's.
Yeah, that'd be good.
I, I mean, I don't think one inch at forty feet is unreasonable, um, it's pretty small. But, yeah.
It, it can be really small, but it's so hard to, um, like we, you know, for a small property, we would want it to come in at.
Yeah, larger.
Right. So.
So I think, um, so I'll share my screen.
Okay, great.
And I apologize for the dark format. Hopefully that doesn't get too confusing, but, so thi- this ties in with the chapter three eighty as well, so trying to make these consistent, but I, I started with, um, what Heidi was just describing, three B, um, a completed Mylar, which is required of the land and four copies, the scale of one inch equals forty feet, or appropriate for the size of the property is maybe approved by the planning board, so. We further want to, do we want to further define that or change that?
Can you make that a little larger, Jim?
I have a large screen, I apologize.
Nope, thank you.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Yep. I don't think we take out the scale.
I mean, it, it, it says or appropriate, so, I mean, I think that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
So we're, we're leaving it up to the engineer or the surveyor.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, and then item C, one copy of the plan of the land in electronic form compatible with the town's GIS system, and then I added to that an electronic copy of all documents being submitted in PDF format to planning@sherberne Mass.org. So we didn't have that before, the PDF, so we've added that here.
Why, why are you looking, in what electronic format are you looking for that would be compatible with the town's GIS? Is that like?
Shapefile, maybe?
Okay.
Is it a CAD file, maybe?
I'm just asking, yeah, I'm asking because most engineers will work in CAD, but it's a shapefile that you need for GIS, so if you're asking them to provide both, that's probably doable from any engineer.
Okay.
They can export easily from CAD.
Yeah, okay.
Although, the shapefile is a little bit beyond my knowledge.
Yeah, the standard electronic format for providing drawings, though, I think would be CAD, not, which is, which would not be what's compatible to the GIS system, but that's fine if we want it this way, that's fine. CAD or, well, I mean, I guess the question is, what is it going to be used for, because if, if you actually need it to put it into the GIS system, we should ask for it in shapefile, right?
I think they should ask us, what's our town GIS, a system requirement?
Well, I think a GIS system is typically just a okay. Yeah, a shapefile, but if you were to ask for a drawing in electronic format without specifying, you would get it in CAD.
Well, that's for both.
So you want CAD and shape?
Well, I like the question of what, what this is being used for, um, why you need it in one form or another.
Like, is, is someone gonna put it into GIS, or is the PDF sufficient to be able to trace it?
Well, again, this can be changed at our public hearing, we can look for more information on it and vote it all, talk to Chris Kenny and who is working on our GIS system and see.
Yeah, that'd be good to just ask Chris what format he actually wants it in.
Yep. Keep it this way, just keep it for now and we'll change the language after we get that out of, at the hearing.
Okay.
Sure, so shape, shapefile would be, um, one word there, Jim.
Okay. And that's something that's able to be easily exported from CAD?
Yes.
Okay.
But. If, yes, if you set up your CAD the right way. Yeah.
All right, so the next item that's highlighted, we go down here. Note that the time period of M G L chapter thirty, of chapter forty one, section eighty one P does not commence until. The applicant files with, and then we added here, and has been received as complete and bold by the town clerk. Sometimes what I understand, they're not complete, the clock is running.
So this does, the M G L requires it to be filed by the town clerk, and what I've had is an applicant comes in and goes right up to the town clerk and they timestamp it in. I might not even be here, it could be on a Friday when I'm not here, it doesn't get time stamped in and. We've had one issue not. In a pri- in a couple of years back where. It was constructively approved because it reached twenty one days, not the, within the twenty one days to have a hearing for an A and R. And I've also found that applications have not been complete, but they got stamped in because they took it to the town clerk, so I really wanted to stress. It has to come down here, I have to deem that the application is complete, then we can take it up to the town clerk and have it stamped in to start the clock.
Do we state that uh that deemed complete by the. Ploton Town Planner?
Um, I don't think so, I think I've talked to the town clerk's office and they're all aware that unless they've talked to me, they're not to put anything through.
Unless you do a little signature on it.
Yeah, something.
Little symbol or something.
They they understood when I explained what was happening, so right now they know that they just. Don't, they don't take it direct and say, you know, they just want to see that everything is filed completely. We have to check, we have, you know, all these items in and.
Jim, excellent.
Okay. So all of this remains intact. Then the next item that's being modified.
Hold on, hold on, can we go back to that for a sec? I just looked up, because I would think that that would be the kind of thing that would be. In the, in the, the law itself. And I just looked up section eighty one P.
Yep.
And it says, um, if the board fails to act upon a plan submitted under this section or fails to notify the clerk. Or or fails to notify the clerk of the city or town and the person submitting the plan of its action. Within twenty one days after its submission.
Right, and they're they're taking it as submission to the town clerk.
You're saying submission to Heidi Doyle.
Well, no, we still said, we want it to be complete, but we don't want to start, they can't start their clock until it's a complete application.
But wouldn't one finding be? That. No, not not approved because it's incomplete?
No, you. Yeah, you have to approve it at a meeting. And if there's no meeting coming up in the summertime, if something happens, it's, it's. You know, say I'm on vacation, I'm gone for a week, someone came, they filed it with the town clerk, oh, the clock started running and all of a sudden I come back in and find out.
I understand what you'd like to have, but master general law here says. Within twenty one days after its submission, after the.
Right, but as a complete submission.
But a complete submission. Yeah. What I'm saying is your, your, what is deemed a submission is not a partial plan. I'm trying to tell people that what we're gonna deem is a, as a submission has to be complete, it's gotta be all these things.
Okay, I don't know if that would stand up to me if I was an attorney, just in terms of like. When you submit something, that's a submission, whether it's complete or or incomplete. Right?
The prob- problem we have is if you submit something incomplete, the clerk stamps and they timestamp everything. You can't go back and say, oh, now it's, you know, it's, it's not complete, we're starting in clock again, and they're gonna say, no, it's already stamped in.
Um, um, right, I just. I just wonder if the, if the cor- course would be, it was stamped in as a submission. And the board action would be not approved because it's not complete. Rather than saying it was never submitted, which I don't know if that's. A true statement. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, I don't think it would ever not be submitted.
But it says within twenty one days after its submission, so how is, like? If it was submitted, then that's when the clock starts, is how I read that the master general law.
Yeah, some towns have actually said that you have to submit to the town planner, but I think it's.
I just wonder if this is in conflict with the, with the mass general laws, is what I'm saying. Since the mass general law requires action within twenty one days of submission.
Right.
So what you're saying is to reject it if it's incomplete.
To, to, yeah, it's approval not required, but you, but you can still take a not approved or you can, there's. I can't remember what the discreet actions you can take are, but.
I'll reach out to town council and ask them.
Okay, sorry to complicate it, Heidi.
That's a fair point, actually.
Yep.
Because it does, it does say the twenty one days comm- commences at submission, and I don't know that we can redefine that in our application.
Because everything refers to M, mass general law, even the chapter three eighty, and that's spoken into a little bit next.
Alright, sorry.
So Heidi, I guess the workaround would be is that uh they can't add anything to a submission once it's been uh submitted and time stamp. Is that legal?
I wouldn't go there because you do. I I don't know. I mean, the, the goal is we want to approve and we want to get these through. I just don't know if we can. I'll have to ask her what, what works.
Are you just seeing the word document or my whole screen? I'm just curious, I can't see what I'm.
Just the word document.
Okay.
Can I just ask a question to clarify this process, just to make sure I understand? So if the applicant, they, they submit to the clerk. And now there are twenty one days, that's twenty one days for us to make. A decision.
Yeah.
Total, like.
Yeah.
Yes.
So if it's incomplete. Even if Heidi's gone for a week. You know, you still have two weeks to determine whether it's complete or not, which is fine, that you can easily bounce it, if it's not, you can just. We just reject it, that's easy. I guess it's harder if they do that and then it's complete. Then we need time to review it, but we don't have time because they submitted it.
Well, Heidi usually reviews everything and and assesses whether it's in compliance.
Well, and the twenty one days has to account for a scheduled planning board meeting to take a vote, right, and under open meeting law, so it's not just a quick question of like. You know, it's like, if we're on our summer schedule and we have one meeting every four weeks, it's really hard to react to these.
Yeah.
Um, but also I don't know if it's just a bounce, if it's incomplete, I don't know if Heidi says, oh, it's not complete, I, 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 I don't recall.
Yeah, what would happen?
If an A and R still requires an action from the planning board to deny it based on incompleteness. Right?
Yeah, you either, you endorse it. Or you say it's a subdivision plan required, I don't think you have it, and there, one of our choices is not to. Say it's incomplete.
So what?
Yeah, what if they don't submit a site plan, that's a. What do you do then?
They don't submit a site plan?
Yeah.
Where's the site plan?
No, if they don't submit a plan with their, with their A and R application, like what if it's so def- deficiently incomplete, right?
I, I don't accept it, I just said it's not, it's not a submission.
Oh, so it is a bounce.
But, but if it has a stamp, then it's submitted.
Well, that's why I'm trying to stop that, I'm trying to say, I want to make sure that nothing's stamped unless it is a. Complete application that we can say, yes, it's submitted. If they're missing one of those things, they don't have a plan that, you know, they didn't have a check, it's not a complete application, it can't be stamped in as submitted. Because I, I see the planning board action is approval not required or approval required, that's your only two choices.
And if they didn't have, for example, the map to go along with it, then uh we, we couldn't.
No, then it's not a complete application, it's not submitted.
But it was submitted, Heidi.
Stamp, then it's submitted.
No, it's submitted as stamped in.
So what stops the twenty one day clock?
Right. Right.
What, what stops?
Let's keep deferring this to counsel, because I just don't.
Yeah.
I.
Yeah.
I think the issue someone would have, not, I, I can't imagine anybody having an issue about. Basically saying you're not starting the clock until the application is complete. I think the issue someone might have is. Let's say they submit it. To the town clerk and it is complete. But you don't. It, you're not around for an entire week and you don't say it's.
Right.
In that case, they would really want the date of the original submission to govern.
Right. Like, I could, I could see that.
Yeah, okay. Well, let's just keep flagging it for counsel, because I think.
Yeah.
Alright, what's next up, Jim?
Alright, so the next item. Planning board action um. And that. So the owner, looks like the formatting is a little off here, I'll have to look at that again, but. The owner certifying that they were the owners of record of the above described property at the time of application. And at the time of the hearing, this might be questionable as well, but Heidi, maybe you can elaborate on why we're adding.
Right. So we were challenged at the last A and R. That a deed changed hands after everything was submitted, stamped in, scheduled our meeting, and right before our meeting. Another deed was recorded giving an owner, changing the ownership of one of the parcels. And. We have no way of knowing that that happened. It's not something we do, like when I look at it, I look up and say, oh, if the deed yet says that's the owner, because right now, we only say that you're the owner of record on our application. And. It's. When a deal was done, there's nothing I can, I can do, it's what's interest, I, you know, even talked with Jeremy on this too, it. It's kind of a private deal afterwards and and how would they record something that. They don't, you know, like what's the, if they don't have the correct plan. So. You know, kind of determined that it wasn't. An issue for us on our decision, but going forward, I want to make sure that. We have a way of monitoring and that someone's gonna sign. That they're certifying that they are the owner also at the time of the hearing.
Yeah.
So you get out, you could almost really just take the first part out, it's just at the time of the hearing that you're concerned about.
Well, no, because I also want it at the time you finally application, it, it's a different owner, what if they sold the property, you know, the reverse? All owners on an A and R plan, if anything's changing a property line, all of them should be signing in this application.
But if you need, if you need to have this, the latter, then the former obviously has to be the same. At the time of application, if you're also at the time of the hearing.
If you're not the property owner at the time of the application, I don't think you can certify that you are the property owner at the time of the hearing, because things change, right? So I, I don't see harm in leaving it. As both, just to cover bases, I mean.
Yeah, I'd just rather see more. We have a problem with ambiguity on a lot of our things and I'd rather see it spelled out.
It was just a weird situation that happened.
Yeah. So when that, when that, when that happened, the, the person wouldn't have been able to certify, like if this had been the format they were supposed to.
Well, they would have had to have the new owner be a s- part of, it says, we certify that we are the owners, they would have both had to sign. Right, so that's saying that like the person who's about to buy my property is also in agreement with this A and R, because they're the ones who have to file it.
Okay.
Who have to record it with the county, right?
Yeah, I just, I guess my, my confusion is because that person, like one person was the person, the owner. At one time and one was the other, so who's? There were, there, there were two lots. The first, the person who signed the application owned both of them at the time of the application, so, so changing property lines was not an issue.
Yeah.
He sold off one of the lots before the hearing.
Okay.
So at the hearing. He didn't own.
Okay.
The second lot, I could, according to what was sent to me from someone else.
Sure.
Later, you know, so it was, again. That's not what we were certifying on the application.
Okay, without the approval on.
So then, when that person, when he made the decision to sell the property, did he need to like refile the A and R application or like what?
They did.
He didn't need to. But, well, that's what I'm asking is, is if this will, is. Like.
Presumably. Presumably the new owner would have to be the one to. To record it on the deed. Or their agent, presumably.
So tech, when they closed, technically, the old property lines were still in effect.
Right.
That's the property they bought.
Right. Okay, I mean, that makes sense to me, alright.
Yeah.
So we striking that?
I would not strike it.
No.
Fine.
Well, the only thing I was saying is, is that. It's, it's just redundant, the, if you had the second part, then the first automatically has to be the case, but.
I, I don't know, I'm just concerned there could be some.
Fine, it's fine, it's fine, that was just my point, that was all.
Alright, so the next item, the contents of the plan, we've described some of this already, but. Um, I, I've changed, so, so thi- this is a number format and I've changed that on chapter three eighty. To match, I think it was in letter format, but. Um, item eight here, location of all existing structures, including swimming pools, task force, et cetera. Septic tank, outline of leaching facility and their setback from lot lines, we're adding that.
Good.
Item twelve, vicinity.
About ten.
Oh, yeah, sorry, I missed that. I may be getting colorblind, um, existing and proposed permanent boundary markers and. Existing stone walls that are property boundaries, so it qualifies a. The stone wall component.
That's because our other ones said stone walls and one of, there was a comment. Um, at the last A and R that not all the stone walls were drawn in, and there are many throughout a property, and when I've talked to people that. Do this on the survey, they said, we, we put the ones that are on the boundaries, we don't put all of the internal stone walls. On it, so looked at some other towns and that seemed to fit the bill.
Any other discussion on ten?
No, go on to twelve.
Yeah, we're just adding the word locust to this in a D map, which is a standard industry term. Item fifteen, I think we're adding. For existing or proposed parcels, which that qualifies as a buildable lot, according to the town bylaws, a notation on the parcel saying that. Such lots are not to be considered a buildable lot. I think we ran into this in the last A and R where we had to handwrite it.
And other towns have this part as part of their application, so just, we just didn't have it on our application, so I wanted to be very clear. That it should be labeled on the parcel.
Okay, and then item seventeen, we're adding, or other information as may be required by the planning board.
Do you want about the footnote? The undersigned. Wait. Remember the footnote issue, were you gonna change the, the required language on the footnote too? The under the, under the signature block?
Um. No, I think that was okay, it was, it was just that the last A and R had a version of this and it didn't. Have this exact writing, it was, it all, the content was the same, con- context was the same. But I think we can still keep that. But I think we can still keep that.
All right, so, are, is there any more comments on this? Document? From anybody on the planning board? Hearing none, anybody that's not on the planning board?
Who's still awake on the call?
Hearing none? I make a motion to approve the changes and updates and addendums that we have just made at this meeting to Form A and the Rules and Regulations Sections three eighty dash two point five comma two point six on approval not required procedure and to schedule the public hearing for August nineteenth, twenty twenty five. At seven fifteen, do I put it at the same time or do I put it at a later time?
I would put it at a later time.
Seven thirty, seven forty-five?
I, I would say eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock.
Stormwater might go longer.
At eight o'clock? Do you have a second?
Further discussion question?
But we still, discussion is a second, who did a second?
I did.
Okay, Rob, Rob seconded, okay, any further discussion?
Yeah, would, would it make sense to put it, this one before stormwater since it's easier? Or is it not easier, maybe it's not easier?
No, it's up to, up to, up to you.
I just hate to get to eight o'clock and have to like formally continue with a stormwater hearing.
Yeah, we, we can do that, it should be shorter.
So if we make an amendment to the motion to do it at seven o'clock or seven oh five or something? Since we already voted seven fifteen for the stormwater one?
Right.
I don't know what works.
Well, you can make a motion to revoke the stormwater.
Oh. You do that, whatever works.
So let's do the, the stormwater seven fifteen and the A and R at seven thirty? Is that enough time, fifteen minutes, do you think?
No, that's, that's, stormwater is gonna be longer, I think is what Steph's saying.
That's why I said the A and R at seven fifteen and the stormwater at seven thirty, is fifteen minutes enough for the A and R? Or do we want half an hour for the A and R?
I would try for fifteen minutes.
Okay. So, are we all good with changing the time on the stormwater to seven thirty and the A and R for seven fifteen?
Sure.
So if we vote, that's what we're voting, so the rest of the motion, just the time changes? Do I have a second on that then?
No, second again.
Steph?
I.
Jim?
Hi.
Rob?
Hi.
Brett?
Hi.
I, Frank Hookamay as well. Case, site plan review and special permit application forms.
Well, do we, do we, do we need to go through the?
I think, yeah, I think, yeah, the regs.
So I'll share that.
Oh, the, is that, you talk about the A and R regs?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, okay.
I mean, this is a heavy meeting.
I know.
Next one will be as well.
I was gonna say, get used to it, I think the it's gonna be a lot.
Okay. So this is chapter three eighty, we begin with two point five submission of plan, I don't know why it starts with two point five, but I added a two point four ahead of that, which is borrowed on language largely from Harvard, which refers the A and R process back to MGL chapter forty-one, section eighty-one P. And the rules and regulations that Towne Sherburne Planning Board Regulations, Article Two Procedures for Submission of a Plan Re Not Requiring Approval Under Subdivision Control Law. And then Harvard had another sentence, which I'm not sure how this would apply, because I didn't see it in the state regs, but they listed four types of specified exceptions to the definition of subdivisions and, and, and MGL chapter forty-one, section eighty-one L, which I didn't see, maybe I missed it, but it's like, I, I cross that out, but I think the, the, the mission of this is just to refer to chapter forty-one eighty-one P. And then the second part of this adding this language, such plans do not require approval under the subdivision control law, because they do not show a subdivision as defined in MGL chapter forty-one, section eighty-one L. A person wishing to record such an approval not required in our plan must submit an application to the planning board. If the planning board agrees that approval is not required, it must forthwith, without a public hearing endorse it, thus allowing it to be recorded at the registry of deeds, and our approval does not endorse a lot as a buildable lot, so that's just kind of preamble to what we have.
I think it's good to clarify that, yeah.
So the L is correct in that second one, eighty-one L, but when, the first one is eighty-one P?
Correct, the definition. The next one's minor point, paragraph B says, we, we currently say fill out, I think, complete sounds better. So I just change that.
Yeah.
So paragraph C, this is again minor, just removing the comma between identification and all right, so paragraph D, here, I'm gonna have to fix the formatting on this a little bit, so submit to the town planner the following, and then we have item one. A completed form A, so I've crossed all of this out and started from scratch. So this may need to be numbered as opposed to lettered, so we'll fix the form here.
Yeah.
So we'll start with one, a completed form of this original, this Form A and one additional copy of the completed form. And then being consistent with the form itself, item B, the completed Mylar of the land and four copies of the plan, it's got one inch equals forty feet or appropriate for the size of the property, as may be approved by the planning board, same language. Item C, one copy of the plan and land, of the land in, of the land, if an electronic form compatible with the town's GIS system, again, I'll copy that same language. Then the same with the PDF, an electronic copy of all documents being submitted in PDF format. And then E, one copy of the plan of a plan showing the existing boundaries of the land at a, at the same scale as a plan indicating the proposed changes. And F, the filing fee is specified and schedule C payable to the Towne Sherburne. And then we add.
Before we go on from there, an A, I think you can take out the term this, I think in the Form A, it said, complete this Form A, but in the regs, it sounds a little bit odd to say this Form A, so it's just so it's where it says, A, completed original of Form A, just take out the word this.
Okay. I, I actually should just cross that out or
No, 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 not there, so, under subitem A, it says what to submit, completed original of Form A, we don't need the word this there, because that's on the form itself, which is this form.
Okay.
Um, and one additional copy of the completed form, maybe? And then I didn't catch this when we looked at the Form A, because it wasn't highlighted. E is one copy of a plan showing the existing boundaries of the land at the same scale as the plan indicating the proposed changes. That seems a little odd to me, because where you show the proposed changes, you might want to zoom into a large property. But then might you want to have a different scale when you're showing the boundaries of the land, so that you can show the whole parcel in the context? Do, Heidi, when we get A and Rs? And we see the like?
So with the A and R. We all, it's on there. Usually the locus, the vicinity locus map shows all the other adjacent lands and adjacent properties. Too, so there's usually a, usually you have your plan, that's the big copy, and then a smaller one that shows it more in other locations.
So C is the, is the plan and a, in a big copy, right?
Yeah.
Like showing the detail of where lot lines are changing?
Yeah.
But E, isn't it weird to prescribe that that has to be at the same scale?
No, we've had, well, because usually it's been like the old, or like the old plan of what was already there, and then the existing boundary, that's been the same scale, I've usually gotten that in the same scale.
Okay, I, I'm just used to seeing it on one, on one drawing, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
And I, I, I mean, a lot of times I'll send it, and I don't think it's always copied over to you, because it's, it's like you said, it shows it on it, but they, they do submit a big copy of it.
Probably because they're required to right here, okay, cool, thanks.
So, the next item, the note again, has to go through further review as we previously discussed.
Okay.
And then the contents of the plan are the same as was on the form, but here I actually showed the changes. But we already went through this.
Yeah, okay.
And that's a any other discussion?
No, it mirrors the form nicely and
Do I entertain a motion?
Is that all of it, are we? So part of the same motion that we already made? Because didn't I make a motion to approve changes and update to the Form? So I think I did.
Okay.
So I did, and this is the completed form, so if we all agree to the, the form, we're, we're good, so what, what would you like to do, would you like to revoke this motion, or do you just want to do a straw poll to say we all agree to this form?
Revoke this motion.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the changes to the Rules and Regulations Sections of three eighty dash two point five, comma two point six, on the approval not required procedure. And to schedule a public hearing for August the nineteen, twenty twenty-five at seven fifteen. Can we do that at the same time as we do the form?
We can do both.
Okay, then, do I have a second?
Oh, second.
Okay, and Brett seconds, okay, Steph?
Hi.
Brett?
Hi.
Rob?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
And I, Frank Hookamay as well. Hey, now are we on to site plan review and special permit application forms and rules and regulations updates?
Yeah, and my recommendation was, we move this off to another meeting for this topic, because it's, it's going to take a lot more research and it shows you how one form, we were already so involved on it.
Yeah.
This is gonna take more. So I think that this topic should get moved to a future meeting.
And the August nineteenth may be pretty full.
Yeah, I wouldn't, yeah, it's gotten, that changed since my notes.
So do I make a motion to just move it to the future, or do we do even need to make a motion?
I don't think you need a motion.
Okay. So we have the public hearing date and items and times, so we're good with that. Are there any reports on meetings from any?
No, we need to use number two, the special permit ADU type. So the site plan and special permit forms was the one I was suggesting, but the special permit ADU types. We should have a little discussion on.
Okay.
So this one. Okay, okay, do you want to lead it?
No, I said, would you like to lead it?
Oh, okay, so I sent out something labeled number twenty-seven, and it was in the public packet online. So under our three point two, under our general bylaws, our uses, there is a number twenty-seven, and it's for low and moderate income. It's called the low and moderate income apartment. When we were looking at all our changes last year, we, we, this was on our radar to just, but it was on the radar to decide, did this meet? Can you still do an ADU that's gonna meet the affordable housing requirements and get the counting? At the time, it was yes, so we didn't look at this anymore. What has since come up? And actually, just this afternoon, I, I was copied on an application for an ADU under this statute, this number twenty-seven. And the, the concern that came up is this appears to create a third category of ADUs, one we hadn't considered. It is a special permit ADU, because it says right in it that you need to have a special permit and the special permit granting authority has to be satisfied on this. But it, it allow, it, it puts very strict limits on how you qualify an ADU to be affordable. So that would account on it. What this number twenty-seven does not say, it is silent on whether it requires owner occupancy on either unit. And this has now come up and according to the building inspector and to the chair of the ZBA, they do not believe there is any owner occupancy requirement for this, because it is silent and not written in this bylaw. So I don't plan, we're gonna have a discussion tonight on it, it's more, I want to bring it to your attention that right now, this can be another rental ADU. So we can have a primary house, we can have this special permit one, because we allow a special permit one, and you can have a state the protected use one, the byright one, all can be rented, the house, this one and that, so effectively, this is putting three rental units on a parcel.
With a, with an absentee landlord, potentially.
Right, if that's the planning board's comfortable and wants to keep that, I don't think that was the intent, but that's effectively by not having that language in here, this is, can be the effect. We can't change it by regulation, it can only be changed by town meeting vote. But I wanted to get this on people's radar and start thinking about whether you want to make a bylaw change, do we even want to still have a low and moderate income apartment option? Because you could actually put this type of, you can create restrictions on, on units now. And if you do want to keep it, how do you want to handle it? So the floor is yours.
Yeah, I'm just pulling up some materials to share, so let me share my screen, just because I don't think Brett was part of these conversations, so it'll be good to just give you a quick primer. This was the warrant, so when we did this like comprehensive housekeeping, oh no, this was the ADU warrant article.
Yep.
Right, and so, we also did a comprehensive housekeeping one, where we sort of went to items that the building inspector had flagged to, to be known as problematic. And one of the things he brought up with with this language in our bylaws. This low or moderate income apartment um was. How does this jive with forty B? Can we define low income? It was determined not to be a problem at this time. So like Heidi said, we moved on. But in the warrant itself for ADUs. We had a term called apartment, which is now no no longer in use. It's formerly apartment. And we changed that to special permit ADU. For units twelve hundred square feet or less, which requires a special permit. We didn't change any of the any of the terms of the special permits, but we did say. Um. I don't think we left it in here because it wasn't a change, but it does have a clause that says. The owner must live in the primary or the or the accessory unit. The owner of the property must live in one or the other, so that we wouldn't have an absentee landlord situation. And then we added this protected use ADU, which was a state requirement. So that was added as a category of use. But what we missed at that time was that there was this other one. These are items two and now two A that we added in. But there was a twenty seven way down at the bottom of the list. That is. Low income apartment. Which has a lot of, it has the low income definition and but then it also has a lot of the same, you know, requires a special permit. Um, twelve hundred square foot limit, right? Like a lot of the other. A lot of the other requirements of the special permit ADU, but adds a low income. Requirement and doesn't specify that the owner has to live in one of the units. On on the property. So we have situ- a situation now where someone might have been going for a special permit ADU. And now they're saying, oh, look what I found. I'm going to apply as this low income ADU. And now the owners don't have to be present on the property.
And it can be twelve hundred square feet.
And it can be twelve hundred square. So the state, the state required by right ADU was nine hundred square feet with no owner live in requirement. But we decided to keep our twelve hundred square foot special permit ADU. And keep the owner live in requirement, except that there was this one hiding down here. Because we weren't, we haven't done the comprehensive bylaw update um to really look through everything, but this one was hiding down here that says. Um. That it was its special permit twelve hundred square feet, but there's no explicit owner live in requirement. Now it does say it was amended in twenty twenty three and Heidi and I tracked down what was changed in twenty twenty three. And it was just housekeeping. It was like references to code sections and stuff like that. It wasn't anything of substance. So this wasn't visited topically in for content in twenty twenty three either. So just to plant the seeds, you guys can do your research and. Look at this. I mean, the way we've written our special permit. ADU, you know, the the way the state mandated there by right ADU was a smaller unit. Presumably to assist with housing pricing and having different types of housing stock available. You know, we we de- definitely intentionally designated a twelve hundred square foot special permit ADU. This potentially could be deleted from the bylaws at the next town meeting. If the planning board so felt that that was appropriate, because really anyone could take a special permit ADU. And a- apply these low income, you know, thresholds to it should they want to. But, you know, the special permit was meant to be sort of a bigger ADU than the state requires.
So is it this number twenty seven that's allowing you to have three units on the property rather than just?
No.
No, so what?
The three units was because. Um. The state mandated ADU could. We could not add a restriction that you can't add one of these if you already have an ADU. So it created, but so we. Did we add that sentence in here? Only one ADU may. So we we at one point in the development of the bylaw had a statement here that said. Special permits will not be approved if there's an existing ADU on the property, so that someone could build the state one first. And then they couldn't build the twelve hundred square foot one. But if they built the twelve hundred square foot one first, they could build the state one next. And we felt that that was like a little bit of. Like too tricky, right? It's like.
Yeah.
You shouldn't have to know the sequence to buy to do things to be able to get three of them. So because of those limitations, we changed this. To match the language in the state one, which says only one ADU may qualify as a by right. Uh, whatever they call protect protect protected use ADU. We added that same language here, which means that anyone who has a property. Can do one special permit ADU and one by right ADU and that allowed the three of them. But there wasn't really a situation in which we could pre- preclude. A third unit without feeling like it was unfair or providing an unfair advantage to a certain population of people who had already built an ADU.
Okay.
The the site has to support it. I mean, still need to comply with um. The you know, border health regulations and everything else, so.
Septic and wells and all that here.
So now we did, we did all that work here on ADUs and then come to find down here that there's. What's called an apartment. It's not even called an ADU, but it mirrors the. Special permit ADU, but adds the low income and for whatever reason doesn't include the live in requirement.
I I think it's legacy language.
Probably.
So my recommendation is this is a September topic.
Yeah.
Okay. But just want people to really start thinking about. How, what you'd like to do, if anything, on this next town meeting for this.
And I think Heidi, you said we already have a permit in process now for one of these two for these. Okay. So we can't do anything about that because the bylaw is the bylaw until the next town meeting, but.
Right. So Frank, that was it for number two.
Okay. Do we need to do anything for number three, which is public hearing days and items? Did we already do that?
I think we've reviewed it. We're going to have the, I'll just do a review. We're going to have seven fifteen is going to be the A and R. Form A and the by the bylaw section three eighty two point five. And then at seven thirty, we're going to have stormwater. Rules and regs. There's also potential A and R coming in. That would probably have to get added after that. So I'd probably say that if we do have an A and R come in. Um, it won't have to be a public hearing, but it will have to be on our agenda. I could put it down for eight thirty if you want to do. A later one or we could try seven oh five.
Let's do seven oh five.
Okay.
Unless it's unless you see unless when it comes in, it's really uh complex and we and you have a conversation, but if it's not. Then we always look for something to do until seven fifteen anyway.
If it, this will be a very minimal A and R.
All right, so maybe let's do that seven oh five then.
Okay. Um. And then I was not going to plan on putting too much, seeing how long this one went. I wasn't going to put putting too much on the August nineteenth meeting.
Thank you.
Yeah, we may have a scene, actually take that back. We may have a scenic road hearing that may have to go on.
My gosh.
Yeah, a tree removal. But I don't know if it's going to make it through all the hoops in time.
Just one tree. It's not like the last.
Three, three trees.
Okay.
Not like the ever source one.
It it is ever source, but it's three trees. Yeah, they have to determine if it really is on town property first.
Should take a look what they do on non scenic roads.
On which one?
On non scenic roads.
Oh. Yeah.
Brutal.
Yeah. So that would be number three, Frank.
Okay. So is there any reports on meetings with other boards or entities? Hearing none. Is there a town planner report?
Yes, we have another topic that will be coming up. Milborn Farm is um putting in a parking lot on there and they had asked me. What type of planning board approval there might be? So trying to look through and and look at our regulations. Um, we have a special permit in business districts, of which part of that has a site plan review for. Certain non residential activities in a residence district, which that is a non residential activity, but in a residence district. However, we have that. If it's a religious or nonprofit educational purpose, it's exempt from that. So there's no site plan review that would be needed on it. What it does fall under is we do have special regulation two forty. Five point one for off street parking. And when we look through that daycare centers, nursery school, private elementary, secondary school, charitable or philanthropic institution. Number five does have a requirement for number spaces. So it's that's something we would look at if it's uh ten, ten spaces on that. Then the next part C, parking area plans. And it said there shall be submitted to the planning board for approval before a building permit shall be issued or a use permit granted. A plan of the proposed parking facilities, et cetera, et cetera. So it's not a public hearing, but it will require a planning board approval. So I don't know if that's going to make it on the August meeting as well. I think they're going to try and get it in for August. So we may have to add that one in. Um. I'm going to say that would have to be the at like an eight thirty meeting time if we get everything through on that. And the only other thing you'll be looking at is. The plan showing the number of spaces. They need at least ten. They need um I think one handicapped for every fifteen spaces if they have it. Um, and screening of parking areas. We can look at screening if they have. Anything from the neighbors, which they really aren't any neighbors around. So it should be a fairly straight approval as well. If that comes in.
Okay.
And I think that's enough for now.
It is. All right, um. Nine forty. Um, so our next um meeting. Uh, we'll have a public hearing uh on August the nineteenth. So question hybrid or completely Zoom?
That's a good question. Ideally hybrid, I think, but the presentation is best facilitated through Zoom.
We the town has the uh that the new um system for hybrid using the owl, which spins around and. The mic works pretty good and so on, but um. People A need to be around and need to be able to make it to town hall and how many other people uh? In August will be in Sherborne to one to attend person versus just doing a hybrid.
I'll go with whatever the group wants to do.
I'm good with Zoom, I got. Steph, what do you think?
Um, let me, are is anyone on vacation? When is that meeting?
August the nineteenth.
Will need at least four.
Yeah, I'll be here. I well, it's just easier to like zoom in on on. If you're out of town and you're trying to zoom in, um. So the options were totally in person or hybrid?
No, hybrid or Zoom.
Hybrid or Zoom. And if we did hybrid, would the expectation be that? That we would share all the files through the Zoom?
Mm hmm. So you're you're great with that. So you you wanted to be Zoom, you didn't, you could be at home.
Yeah, that's just a lot harder for me to do in person with a laptop with one screen rather than having like my two screens here.
I know.
Um, but it also makes it a lot harder to participate in the discussion.
Right.
So.
So are you voting for Zoom then?
The. The. The hearings are on. Stormwater.
And A and R forms. We'll have, we'll have an A and R plan probably and we may have the uh. Milborn Farm parking.
Yeah.
And then we have the public hearings are the rules and regs.
I'll go with whatever the board wants to do. I'm fine either way. It'll work either way. Whatever you guys think is going to be more effective for the public hearings. It's fine.
Jim.
I'm 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 fine either way, but I agree it's easier to present on Zoom.
Yeah, if I'm presenting and it's hybrid, I'll be I'll be at home for sure. But um if the board would rather have public hearings in person, um that's fine. I just have to. Make sure that I can really he- hear the discussion.
Right. Rob?
Um. I don't have a strong preference. I just think we. Um. We should have an in person meeting once in a while. We shouldn't go to all Zoom all the time. So but I'm fine with this one being a Zoom.
Brett?
Um, I'll probably be away and so I can only participate if we're zooming that one.
Um. For me, I I've already said that I prefer to be Zoom. Uh, the the only issue is if there's anybody that's, you know, in the public. That would rather be here in person, you know, I've I've found that since COVID that uh. More people are typically able to attend via Zoom than in person, but. Um, yeah, if we want to allow that as an option, I I I prefer Zoom. And if nobody else has any of the strong feelings, let's just unless Heidi, you want to speak up or?
No, I I think Zoom, because it's going to be so many items to put up. I think the Zoom format for this meet hearing will actually be better. Um, with the plans and you can zoom in and see different parts of the plans. And then maybe in September, when we go back to the two, try to do an in person one when it's, we don't have to have as many. Things to display.
Yeah, I mean, I think I agree with Rob on have and what you're saying, having to. Um, split it up and have some. In person time. I think there's value to that, but what we're doing. Works best with Zoom.
Right, so we'll have the August nineteenth uh Zoom and then we'll look at the um the September ones um. At at the end of August, in around at August nineteenth meeting. Okay, um, any other subjects, topics that we want to need to discuss? Hearing none, I have a motion. Do I have a second? I make a motion to adjourn at what time is it? Nine forty four. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Brett?
Hi.
Rob?
Hi.
Steph?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
I Frank look them, I as well.
Good to see you guys. Have a good night.
Don't you miss this, Heidi, man?
We missed you. Sticking it out too.
Jane, thanks for joining us if you're there.
I'm here happy to join.
Okay, thanks everyone. I'm going to end the meeting.
Good night.